Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, Councilman Catch, I sure can.
Okay, because I can't get the video to work, but okay.
No, I hear the melodic tone of your voice. Okay. I want to thank everyone for being nimble today again. This is our second master plan public hearing, where we had to adjust because of weather. So I just want to thank my colleagues for being nimble, for the council staff for being nimble, and also for everyone of the participants that's either viewing or speaking today in terms of their flexibility as well. So this is, the council is convening this public hearing regarding the draft master plan 2030, which will now come to order. Due to inclement weather, tonight's public hearing is being held virtually via WebEx Video Telecom. The draft master plan was prepared by the Department of Planning pursuant to Section 523 of the County Charter and was submitted to, that was submitted to the planning board. The planning board voted to approve the draft master plan 2030 with amendments on June 29th of 2023. The planning department then transmitted the plan to the county council on July 28, 2023. I'd like to introduce the planning director, Steve Lafferty, who will now give us an overview of the draft master plan. Welcome, Mr. Lafferty, and delighted to have you here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council and the public. Thank you for the opportunity. The Department of Planning is proud to introduce draft master plan 2030, which is Baltimore County's 10-year comprehensive plan. Master Plan 2030 involve extensive community engagement, recommendations from local experts and stakeholders, input from the various county agencies and the department planning staff, as well as an examination of best practices in other jurisdictions. It is a data-driven plan that involves extensive analysis of information that would lead to proposals for Baltimore County's current reality as well as its future needs. In that, we have four goals in mind as we drafted this master plan. One is to focus on preparing for future needs of the county. Secondly, to incorporate best plan, planning practices. Third, to provide clear implementation guidelines and benchmarks that could be adhered to as we move forward over the next decade, and creating a living document that can evolve through the years. There are three interwoven themes in this plan. Equity, to be inclusive in our decision-making, the distribution of resources, and also creating opportunities for everyone. Secondly, sustainability, to ensure the long-term sustainability of the county's infrastructure and safeguarding our ecology and climate. And lastly, to ensure that all residents have high-quality accessible housing, cultural and recreational opportunities, and safe communities, while promoting vibrant communities with economic development strategies. These themes influence the goals and actions that are laid out in the plan and the vision framework. The plan is organized in four sections. The first is an overview, provide a guide for the document itself. Secondly, is the growth framework, which focuses on outlining a new approach to growth over the next decade, called retrofit, in recognition that the redevelopment and revitalization are critical for future growth and emerging trends throughout, throughout the county. Thirdly, is a place types map, which provides a general set of recommendations for land use based upon the vision framework and the goals and the data-driven retrofit analysis that is in that growth framework. It is this data analysis that led to the designation of various nodes throughout the county. And lastly, the vision framework establishes the goals for the future long-range development of sustainable Baltimore County. The plan draws heavily from the American Planning Association's reports sustaining places, best practices for comprehensive plans. And the idea is to adapt six principles in the vision framework. Liveable built environment, harmony with nature, a resilient economy, responsive regionalism, inclusive planning, and healthy community. These are the six elements to the vision framework that's laid out in the plan, which will hopefully guide us over the next 10 years. Thank you for the opportunity to briefly introduce the process and structure and the importance of Master Plan 2030. We look forward to public comments this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lafferty. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Lafferty? Okay, thank you. We've had quite a few discussions with Mr. Lafferty, so I think we'll, as, let me just go through the remarks here. As the county council reviews and considers the draft plan, we're holding this public hearing in order to provide the opportunity for public input and comment on the draft master plan 2030. Anyone wishing to speak should have registered on the council's website prior to the hearing. Each speaker will be provided up to three minutes to speak. Ms. Bel Castro, are there any speakers for this hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just want to reiterate, so that everyone has an opportunity to address the council, please limit your comments to three minutes. If you are past that, I will stop you and let you know that you are over your time limit. Our first speaker for today's hearing. Also, one more thing, I will elevate each person that is registered. I'll call your name. I will elevate you as a panelist. You may turn your camera on if you prefer, and you can unmute yourself. Our first speaker is Kathleen Scully. Ms. Scully, you're on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony when you're ready. And unmute yourself.
Thank you, Ms. Scully. Go right ahead.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and I would like very much to do my video. Can I do that?
Absolutely, you can turn your video on.
Okay, bear with me. I thought I did. Oh, there we go. Ah, yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. My name is Kathleen Scully. I live at 10813 Davis Avenue in the historic community of Granite. Lived here for 41 years. I am here on behalf of the Greater Patapsco Community Association Incorporated, which has been an active association since 1986 and a participant in the master plan since 2000. We represent a rural and environmentally protected area of 19 square miles and 1,600 households. We are now part of Patapsco Heritage Greenway and recognized by the Maryland Historical Trust. We have an adopted community plan as of 1998, which prompts us to participate at all levels. The new concept form of the 2030 master plan makes it a bit difficult to comment with any specificity. Nevertheless, we wholeheartedly support and endorse the three themes and six guiding principles set forth as the framework for the plan. Glaringly absent, however, is specific implementation of these themes and principles. By definition, a plan is a series of actions required to achieve the desired goal. Implementation by the adoption of strategies and success tracking after the master plan, which is, which is what is set forth. After the master plan is adopted, this is not implementation. Therefore, we are urging the council to use the authority in the Baltimore County Code, Article 32, Title II, Section 203, to make consistency and compatibility with the master plan a legal and procedural requirement, and include in the vision framework and growth framework the six guiding principles as specific development and redevelopment requirements by regulation. They should be set forth specifically, these particular principles, should be set forth specifically in PAI policy manuals, requirements in the zoning code as requirements for any change in the ERTL, and especially, as we now face, as a legal requirement for all CZM petitions. As for the CZM cycle, CZMP cycle, excuse me, the council should institute a 10-year CZMP cycle instead of the resource-draining four-year current cycle. So profoundly out of sync with the master plan renders the CZMP as a major driver of development, ERTL infringement, impacts on infrastructure and schools, and even budget demands related to these areas.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Your, your time is up. If you could wrap up your comments, I just wanted to let you know.
I got 10 seconds. What should be the tail is wagging what should be the dog. The, the council's exercise of this authority is essential to making the 2030 master plan a reality, and there are only seven years left in which to do it. Respectfully submitted. I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scully. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Ms. Scully? Okay, hearing done. Thank you so much, Ms. Scully. Ms. Castro, could you introduce the next speaker, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Kathleen Pontone.
Welcome, Ms. Pontone. It's good to see you. Kathy, are you able to join us?
Mr. Chair, she is muted, and I-
There, there we go.
Okay.
Yes.
Hi.
Hello, Ms. Pontone. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the council. My name is Kathleen Pontone. I live at 2522 Caves Road. I've lived here for about 40 years. I am vice president of the Valley's Planning Council, as many of you know, but I'm testifying here on behalf of ourselves. The Valley's Planning Council has submitted voluminous testimony on the master plan, but I did want to just emphasize one point. And that is the, as to the equine legacy provision that we worked very hard to get a report from Unknown Studio, which is a nationally-recognized planning organization. And they did a report with the support of VPC, the Manor Conservancy, the Maryland Horse Industry Board, which has been submitted with our comments to the council. And it has been, it is in the draft master plan, and in fact, thank you for moving up the review of it by the county to one year. We're hoping that this will be adopted very quickly by Baltimore County. It has three basic economic, basic drivers, according to the report. The equine industry is extremely good for the environment. We ask little in terms of pesticides or water. And there are a lot of things about using the land in this way that are both environmentally sensitive and important for the preservation, in particular of our aquifers, which have become so important. In addition, there is a very big economic driver. This is not something that is in the future. It's now. The report catalogs all the various kinds of activities in the county. We are not only nationally, but internationally known for our horse industry, and hope that the county master plan will recognize that. And the third prong of the report is cultural, for the educational process, in addition to therapy programs and other things that make it an important recreational use for people in Baltimore County, whether they're riders or participants or spectators at equine events. We are very interested in having this adopted as quickly as possible. We, by the way, take the legal position that the master plan is not just simply advisory, but is mandatory, and there is legal precedent for that. But in any case, it's why we think it's so important that this be adopted and adopted soon by the council. We're grateful for the careful consideration that this process has been under, and we're very optimistic about the future and respectfully request the council to adopt it as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pontone. Does any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Ms. Pontone? Hearing done. Thank you, Kathy, for joining us. Appreciate your comment. And Ms. Bel Castro, can we have the next speaker, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker, and I apologize if I mispronounce someone's name, Tom Pelon.
Thank you. It's Pelon, but thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Thomas Pelon. I'm executive president of development for St. John Properties. Before I begin, just quickly, St. John Properties is a member of NAAP Maryland, and I understand that NAAP Maryland will be submitting, I think, both written and verbal testimony, and we support the comments that NAAP Maryland has collectively put together as well. As I mentioned, I'm testifying on behalf of St. John Properties. As you may be aware, we're a local real estate investment company founded here in Baltimore in 1971. We've made a significant part of our investment in Baltimore County. We currently have about 23 million square feet of property that we own, operate, and manage in various states throughout the country, but a lot of that has been developed here in Baltimore County, principally in the form of flex parks or in small industrial parks. We principally develop in the ML and IM zones in Baltimore County, and much of the ML IM zone land under the proposed plan is located in areas that are mapped as connected neighborhood and established neighborhood. As you may be aware, connected neighborhood is described generally as land uses that include medium or high-density residential with limited office and commercial, but do not include industrial. Established neighborhoods describes land use as low or medium-density residential with limited office and commercial, and again, doesn't include industrial uses. Our parks are principally developed, as I mentioned, as flex parks that house light industrial uses, office and commercial uses, meaning that they might be deemed as incompatible with the vision put forth by the master plan. Those are our general comments and statements as it relates to St. John Properties' concerns about our ability to continue to own, manage, and operate successful business parks in the county. And we'd ask that the council make appropriate changes to the plan to address those concerns. More specifically, we have a project that you may be familiar with. It's called Greenly. It's in the Middle River District of the county. It's about 1,000-acre master plan mixed-use community. That project is principally mapped as connected neighborhood. The southeast quadrant, about 25% of the landmass, and about 75% of the landmass is mapped as established neighborhood. Greenly is a mixed-use development, and mixed-use developments don't necessarily seem to be anticipated by this master plan. So we would have a concern again about, you know, kind of the compatibility as it relates to this plan. Greenly, as you may be aware, has been being developed over the last 20 years. It is, again, as I mentioned, a comprehensively planned community. It's a mixed-use community. The development is, has been ongoing for a number of years and will probably continue for another 10 years or better. It's brought a lot of uplift to the Middle River area. It's garnered strong support from the community, the county, and the council itself over the years. We respectfully ask that the council act to ensure that this project and industrial inflection in general, as I mentioned, are supported by the master plan now and in the future. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Mr. Pelon. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Pelon?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Marks.
I just want to thank Mr. Pelon for his continued engagement with regard to Greenly.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Marks. Any of the members have any additional comments, questions, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Pelon? Hearing done. Thank you so much, Mr. Pelon, and I would ask Ms. Bel Castro to introduce the next speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next registered speaker was Joe Botzler, and I cannot find Mr. Botzler on our attendee list, either by phone number that he registered under or his name. So I'm going to move on to the next speaker. If you are on, Mr. Botzler, please reach out in the chat so that I can locate you. Our next speaker is David Adler. I think I have found Mr. Adler. It is very important when you register for this WebEx that you put your last name. There is someone named David who does not have their last name in here, so I'm hoping that this is him. Mr. Adler.
Welcome, Mr. Adler.
It is indeed me. Thank you. Good afternoon, Councilmen. I assume you agree that Baltimore County needs to continue to grow its tax base to prosper. This current master plan and other efforts by the county are making it more difficult and less desirable for companies to continue investing in the county. I'm aware that NAAP and MBIA are suggesting further revisions to the master plan, and I'm here on behalf of the hundreds of Davis Brown Enterprise employees to support those changes. Currently, in the designation of properties within the definition of established neighborhood, our company has over a million square feet of existing office and retail space. According to the online tool, 50,000 acres have been designated as established neighborhood, including our properties such as Valley Village, Doyle Field Office Park, Brookside Commons, and Red Brook Corporate Office Center. Red Brook Corporate Center, for example, has 600,000 square feet of office space. Since COVID-19, office demand is at an all-time low with no end in sight. Projects like Red Book need to fill an important role to provide a new source of housing in a market where it is badly needed without requiring expensive new infrastructure. The original version of the master plan defined established neighborhood to be an area consisting of predominantly detached single-family homes built post-World War II that will remain as such for the foreseeable future. The planning board correctly broadened the definition, but the master plan still described these areas as having primarily land use of low or medium residential with limited office and commercial. This definition is still not representative of the market reality, and it should be changed. We urge you to consider the concerns of business and property owners, the future of Baltimore County's tax base, and make the requested edits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Adler? Hearing done. Thank you again, Mr. Adler. Appreciate you coming. And Ms. Bel Castro, could we have the next speaker, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Brendan Gill. Mr. Gill, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Welcome, Mr. Gill.
Mr. Gill, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you, everybody. Mr. Chair and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of the Mackenzie Companies, specifically Mackenzie Asset Management LLC, which serves as a corporate general partner of several real estate partnerships which own property in Baltimore County. We've long been involved with NAAP, including prior leadership positions, and they brought concerns of the master plan to our attention. We're also aware that MBIA previously worked with the planning board to pursue important changes to the plan to promote flexibility within the plan. Our company owns a number of properties throughout the county. We manage many more, and we are also actively seeking redevelopment and opportunities throughout the county. One thing that is necessary in all facets of our business is flexibility, and this is particularly important in regards to development and redevelopment. We understand that the master plan sets out to protect our existing communities while channeling the largest-scale redevelopment efforts into nodes. This approach generally makes sense, and we own properties within these nodes that become ripe for redevelopment, which is excellent. However, we also own properties that fall within the existing neighborhood place type, including one that is situated on York Road just north of Padonia Road. To us, this is the heart of the York Road commercial corridor. Our property has no budding residential uses. There are some that are fairly removed across York Road behind other commercially-zoned properties. There's really no neighborhood to protect in this instance. And yet, we are within the existing neighborhood place type that seems to want to tamp down on the potential for meaningful and exciting redevelopment opportunities that could reshape a community. While our property is currently improved with performing commercial uses, the site does enjoy the CCC overlay district, and it would be ripe for a potential residential mixed-use development when the time comes. Unfortunately, the definition without the NAAP-endorsed changes would seem to discourage or maybe even prohibit this. This is precisely why we are supportive of the NAAP changes, which can help promote flexibility. This, of course, does not guarantee that our site will be proposed for a major redevelopment, and it certainly would not exempt us from the normal development review and approval process where the community members can participate. But it would give us the flexibility to pursue any number of uses for the site should it face a need for redevelopment that is critically, and that is critically important to us. I do not mean to dwell on this site. There are no immediate plans to redevelop it, but in the real estate world, we never tend to know what the next three, five, 10 years would bring. We undoubtedly have other properties that are similarly situated, and we similarly just seek the flexibility to be able to redevelop our holdings responsibly whenever that need or the opportunity may arise. I would urge you to consider the edits requested by NAAP and MBIA, and think how this plan will affect Baltimore County for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Gill?
I have a question, Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, Mr. Gill, you specifically brought up a property near Padonia Road. Is that more industrial now, or is it more office space there?
It's a mix of office and service retail.
Okay, I mean, is, or is your company at all looking at opportunities for high-tech manufacturing or anything like that, or are you just looking to build residential where you have properties?
We're not seeking anything for this particular property right now. We're just making the point about the flexibility that's needed to operate and maintain occupancy in real estate and putting this in a place where it could be subject to not having that flexibility could be detrimental to the community in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Gill? Well, thank you, Mr. Gill. Ms. Bel Castro, could you introduce the next speaker, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Catherine Sath.
Good afternoon, Council.
Good afternoon, Ms. Sath.
And good pronunciation there, Izzy.
Thank you.
I don't get that often. I'm, I'm with Not Realty Group, and Not has been based here in Baltimore County for more than 40 years. We have, we've developed, and we currently own more than a million square feet of industrial property in the county. And as others have mentioned, we are concerned about the exclusion of industrial uses in this plan. As written, unless a property falls within a node, there is virtually no consideration given to industrial. And even then, it's considered secondary and limited, unless, of course, it is a special-use place type which applies to just three sites in the county. Consideration needs to be given to how place types are defined, specifically existing and connected neighborhoods. Many of the industrial redevelopment and infill opportunities in the county lie within existing and connected neighborhoods. As defined, this may be construed to prohibit industrial in areas that are already improved with it. We currently have industrial holdings in the existing neighborhood place type, and we're unsure if it's even permissible with this plan. So we ask that you please revisit the plan and provide considerations for industrial, specifically in the definitions of existing and connected neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sath. Do any of the members have any questions or comments for Ms. Sath?
I have a comment, Chair.
Mr. or Councilman or Councilor.
You know, Ms. Seth makes a good point in that I, I think one of the, one of our, our big challenges in Baltimore County is the fact that our, we, we continue to get poorer in the county. And a lot of the reason why we're poorer in this county is because this region, this county, the state, and our federal partners have not done a good job about attracting manufacturing to this region. And we will continue to do that at our detriment in the sense that if we don't have, if we don't have employers who can pay a higher wage, and we, you know, we've touted a lot of the things that have happened over at Trade Point Atlantic, which have been great, but a lot of, a lot of that has been logistics. And I don't see a lot in the master plan that talks about attracting businesses to the area at all. We talk about equity of businesses. We talk about equity of businesses, but there's really no specifics. And I, you know, I don't know if that's the place for a master plan, but I think we are going to continue to suffer economically in this region if we do not find ways to attract employers here that are going to pay, you know, above-average wages. We can, you know, I don't think we're going to build our way out of this in a residential way, and that seems to be what we're leaning to with a lot of property owners, where, well, we just want to build residential. Where are these people going to work? So I, that's my only comment. I know it's kind of all over the place, but I think we really need to think about that as electives, along with our state and federal partners.
Thank you, Councilman Ortel. Do any of the members have any additional questions, comments, or thoughts? Well, thank you, Ms. Saff. We really appreciate you joining us today.
Thank you.
Ms. Bell Castro, can you introduce the next speaker, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Marshall McLaughlin. Ms. McLaughlin, you are one as a panelist. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Welcome, Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. I'm speaking today as a member of a citizens group, We the People of Baltimore County. I support Master Plan 2030's recognition that the county must continue to protect rural farmland, forests, and streams. But there's also a recognition that while we want a direct growth inside the hurdle to areas served by public water and sewer, we're running out of land. So our primary option for future growth is to focus on redevelopment of aging, unsuccessful, and unattractive commercial and industrial areas. Change, however, is often scary, particularly when impacts are unclear. All of the retrofit nodes identified in the master plan are surrounded by suburban residential development. These neighborhoods are generally in good condition and valued by their residents. However, most people would agree that vacant or aging stores, strip centers, fast food, gas stations, car dealerships, and some warehouses are unattractive and don't enhance their communities. Most would agree they'd rather like their quarters, they'd rather see their quarters be more attractive and successful. However, the challenge is, how do we build consensus on what type of retrofit would be desirable? I happen to live in Lutherville, and there's been a lot of active discussion about a Lutherville TOD proposal. I think there are four key issues that the master plan should address. Number one, predictability, which is important to everyone on both sides of the citizen-developer discussion. The community currently relies on the PUD process for customized zoning changes. This is useful in some circumstances, but it's not efficient or effective if we're going to be managing most of our growth being inside these nodes. You can't rezone by PUD everywhere. Two, public engagement is critical to ensure retrofit compatibility and acceptance. However, the county's current regulations schedule a community input meeting too late in the development review process after the developer has already spent a lot of time and money on site planning, engineering, and architecture, and has received county agency comments. So starting over on design to accommodate community input at the community input meeting is very rare. Some surrounding counties require developers to hold a pre-submission community input meeting before submitting any plans to the county for review. The master plan should recommend consideration of options for early, meaningful public input as well as developer responses to these concerns. Concern number three, high-quality, compatible design is also critical to ensure that redevelopment of nodes is attractive, green, has pedestrian, bike, and open-space connections to surrounding communities. Architecture and landscaping are critical, especially in closest proximity to existing homes. The master plan should propose node retrofit review by the Design Review Panel early in the process before county agency review and comments. Finally, adequate public facilities are essential. While the county has adequate public school, water, sewer, and road facility regulations, many citizens don't believe these regulations are enforced. The master plan should recommend review of how other jurisdictions address APF requirements and whether amendments to the county APF regulations would be beneficial. In conclusion, Master Plan 2030 outlines a very important new growth strategy that some other Maryland jurisdictions are already tackling. Learning from both their successes and mistakes would be very helpful, and we urge the Planning Department to reach out to some of those jurisdictions to discover what we want to avoid as well as what we want to copy. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Ms. McLaughlin? Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, I do have one or two questions. Ms. McLaughlin, did you serve as Planning Director for Howard County?
I did.
And in Howard County, did you, did you utilize these pre-submission meetings?
We did. Developers required to post notices on all of the adjoining properties, and they hold that meeting before they can submit, so they know where the community's at and found it was helpful in identifying issues. Many times, there weren't big issues. They might be related to where the open space or landscaping was if it was a residential project, but I think it's a useful way of getting feedback to the developer before they get so committed to the design and engineering of a project.
So I guess that answers my next question, which was going to be is, how did you think that worked out? But it sounds like you thought it worked well.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other additional questions, comments, or thoughts for Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Catch.
Yes, Marshall, are you still there?
I am.
Yeah, hi. I, in looking at the master plan again, I think the one thing that has caused me issues is the fact that I don't see any part of the report that puts emphasis on particular areas that we need to prioritize for development. And, you know, I think we need to do that. Let's take, for instance, Hunt Valley, the Hunt Valley Industrial Park. The question that I have is, do we have adequate schools? Do we have adequate water, storage, are the roads adequate, et cetera? And I think that that would be beneficial to the county to actually pick areas where we think development should take place and begin by seeing what resources need to be provided in order to have that particular property ready for development.
I think that's an excellent point. The master plan does a good job of identifying a lot of older, mostly corridors, some other sites that would benefit from redevelopment over time. They can't all be developed at once.
Right.
Only for the market reasons, but because of infrastructure reasons. So to the extent that it's possible to identify through master plan updates the sites that ought to be prioritized, that would be great because it would provide more comfort to people who are not quite sure what's going on. If it can't be done in time for master plan adoption, perhaps there could be a follow-up process for trying to designate priorities amongst those redevelopment areas.
Right. I was thinking about, in our own district, actually choosing an area and recommending that our Department of Planning do a study and determine what resources are in place and what is needed. Do we have enough school space, for instance, to, so that this area can be developed? So I'm thinking along those, you know, doing something like that.
Well, as I said, I think it makes perfect sense that we can't develop everywhere, and adequate facilities are critical.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. Do any of the members have any additional questions, comments, or thoughts for Ms. McLaughlin? Hearing none. Thank you so much, Ms. McLaughlin, and I ask Ms. Bell Castro to please introduce the next speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Mr. Botzler reached out to me. He was having some technical difficulties. He is now on. Mr. Botzler, you may unmute yourself and begin your testimony. Mr. Botzler, we can't hear you. We can see you. We can't hear you. Maybe check your microphone. Oh, you're muted. Try unmuting.
Is that better?
Ah, yes.
Apologies for the technical difficulties. Good afternoon, Chairman Petrika, members of the Baltimore County Council. My name is Joe Botzler, and I'm a Vice President with the Retail Advisory Division of JLL with offices in Baltimore, Maryland. I'm speaking this afternoon to express concern regarding the proposed Master Plan 2030 currently under your review. We represent the owner of 1940 East Jopper Road, on which now operates Jerry Chevrolet Automotive Dealership and Automotive Service Facility. This existing building has been on the property for almost 70 years, and the site is ripe for redevelopment. My focus is an objection to the Master Plan 2030's place-type map and the definition of established neighborhood. 1940 East Jopper Road has been designed by the Planning Department to receive this designation in its original draft of the master plan. My understanding is that that draft Master Plan 2030 proposes a massive amount of land within the URDL for this lowest-intensity designation. In fact, the proposed plan is prepared by the Planning Department, designates 50,000-plus acres of land within the URDL to be defined as established neighborhoods. This designation is not appropriate one for this property, given the definitions suggested by the Planning Department, which is suburban neighborhoods generally consisting of a moderate density, predominantly detached, single-family homes built post-World War II that will remain as such for the foreseeable future. While there is such acknowledgement of commercial properties and the need to redevelop aging commercial properties, where is there, excuse me, where is there an acknowledgement of commercial properties and the need to redevelop aging commercial properties in this definition? What is more, this property is located within the county's Lock Raven Commercial Revitalization Districts, the goal of which is to promote reinvestment and additional development on commercially-zoned properties. A property remaining static without change will decline in quality. I asked the members of the County Council to amend the definition of established neighborhood to promote the growth and revitalization, especially for properties located in an established commercial revitalization district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Botzler. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Botzler? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Botzler, for your comments. And Ms. Bell Castro, would you please introduce the next speaker?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Ann Haveman. Ms. Haveman?
Yes, hi. Let me see if I can get off video.
Hi.
So my name is Ann Haveman. I'm General Counsel and Deputy Director with the Chesapeake Climate Action Network. We're a climate nonprofit with tens of thousands of members in Maryland and more than 5,000 in Baltimore County. And I'm here today to talk about a way to fund the master plan, and that is to join a growing number of cities and counties and file suit against Exxon and other oil giants. Exxon and others knew about the consequences of burning fossil fuels for decades since the 1960s. Instead of sharing that information with the public and helping to lead the clean energy transition, they pivoted to a decades-long campaign of doubt, denial, and disinformation in order to delay climate action and keep us hooked on their products to protect their profits. Fossil fuel companies have made trillions of dollars from the products that have caused climate change, and they continue to delay and block climate action to this day. So here we are in 2024, and the consequences are all around us. For example, this is the second meeting on the master plan and the second one that needed to be adjusted to accommodate severe weather. These consequences are also expensive. According to the Center for Climate Integrity, Baltimore County will need to spend $334 million on seawalls to protect itself from rising tides by 2040. Between 1970 and 2025, the county will have spent more than $100 million installing air conditioning in schools to protect students from rising temperatures. Precipitation rates are increasing, and the county stormwater facilities are not designed to handle it. The master plan should address that, and that, too, will cost money. I also want to acknowledge that we are not all equally impacted by these harms. The costs and damages of climate change fall hardest and disproportionately on environmental justice communities that have been historically underserved due to the systemic racism and inequality. Oil giants, not those who are most responsible and not taxpayers, should pay for these damages. Of course, Baltimore County would not be alone in filing suit. You join your neighbors in Baltimore City, Anarundale County, Annapolis, and Washington, D.C., all of whom have filed suit against Exxon, and those cases are moving forward. The Climate Resiliency Section of the master plan aims to, quote, "plan and prepare for the negative impacts of climate change to human health and well-being, public infrastructure, private property, and the environment." This lawsuit would be a meaningful way to pay for these efforts. So in sum, I hope that you will support a lawsuit if it comes before you.
Thank you, Ms. Haveman. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Ms. Haveman? Okay, thanks again, Ms. Haveman. And could I ask Ms. Bell Castro to please introduce the next speaker?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Steve, Stephen Whalen. Mr. Whalen, you are one as a panelist.
Good afternoon, Mr. Whalen.
Unmute your microphone, Mr. Whalen.
How's that?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Whalen. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Whalen, and I am a real estate developer in Catonsville. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today about one particular issue in the master plan, and that's my friends at University of Maryland Baltimore County. Their acquisition of the Spring Grove Hospital Center is a major event. It's a key 175-acre, not 200-acre, by the way, since the county's two new ball fields and Men's Homeless Shelter were developed there. But it's a key redevelopment site. The UMBC is obviously very early in its decision process in terms of what they may do with that additional 175 acres. And I think we all understand that if they expand the academic campus entirely, and that's the only additional use, then Baltimore County has no say in the matter. But if they, in fact, use all or any part of it dedicated to public-private partnership, then the development is subject to county planning, zoning, and development regulations, as was the existing BW Tech Park, which they found out the hard way by having to go through to a lawsuit to make that determination. I think the bottom line, the recommendation here is that a collective effort should be taken this early on in the process to be implemented between and among the university, the county, county planning, and the existing surrounding community to maximize the quality of the eventual result. I would hope that the county would consider taking a lead in that effort. Among other things, access of infrastructure, access to the Frederick Road Beltway interchange is a possibility. We've actually done a fair amount of study on that with State Highway Administration. Could be hugely helpful. It's going to be expensive, but could be hugely helpful in making the development function as efficiently as it possibly could. UMBC should be recognized also as a transit hub based on their excellent bus network and their outreach to the community with that network. The Southwest Park and Ride The Southwest Park and Ride also happens to be immediately adjacent to the UMBC campus at South Rolling and I-195. That should be recognized as well. And it's may, while it may presently be underutilized, it has much potential for both mass transit and for connecting to downtown and to BWI from that location. So I'm obviously keyed on this one particular aspect of the Master Plan, but as far as Southwest Baltimore County is concerned in the first district, this is hugely important to what happens in our area in the next 10 years. And it is something I think deserves immediate attention from Baltimore County. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Whalen? Okay, thanks again, Mr. Whalen.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good day. And could I ask Ms. Bel Castro to introduce the next speaker, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is David Conrad. Mr. Conrad, you are on as a panelist. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Everybody see me okay?
Yes. Hello, Mr. Conrad.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. My name is David Conrad. I'm a Baltimore County resident, business owner, and today I'm speaking on behalf of the Bullies Quarters Improvement Association down here in Middle River area. I know that Director Lafferty and the Planning Department have put a lot of work into the Master Plan. We appreciate the opportunity to share some comments today. In the interest of time, I'm just going to touch on a few things, but I have submitted written comment with some maps and a little more detail of what I'll be speaking on, that you're welcome to reach out to me or if you have any questions following up. So as many of the council members are aware, we have experienced tremendous growth in Eastern Baltimore County. Trade Point Atlantic was brought up. Tom Pele brought up Greenlee a little earlier in the testimony today. The Middle River Depot, there's been a lot of focus on revitalization revitalization in the Middle River area. And the Middle River main corridor into Middle River, which is the area we want to focus on speaking about today, is kind of, it serves as the gateway for the Bullies Quarters community. So within the current draft of the Master Plan, there's been these core retrofit areas determined and placed. And the definition of those is basically identified by the Department of Planning that are prime for mixed use redevelopment. And then all of those core retrofit areas, those are kind of the building blocks that the Master Plan uses to, you know, provide general recommendations for future growth in that vision framework section, goals and actions, growth and development in these areas and incentivizes it in some areas as well. So what we're looking at, the methodology that methodology that was used to identify the core retrofit area for the Middle River area already identifies a large section of the main corridor of Eastern Avenue down into Carol Island and Bullies Quarters as part of a core retrofit area or as part of a node surrounding that. And we think that's great. But there's a small section that is not included that we feel should be included. And we also think that we just really just want to take, have the County Council and the Planning Department take a second pass at that, look at that area and see, looking at today's conditions on the ground, if that may still be accurate, the methodology that was laid over at the time that the Master Plan was put together. So there's a couple of reasons why we think that's important. Firstly, the creation of the, recent creation of the Middle River CRD, that was only put in place in September. So I don't know if that was even aware of, the Planning Department was even aware of that when they put together the overlay for Middle River. Councilman Marks and we're appreciative of the fact that he worked very hard over the past year with, you know, Department of Economic and Workforce Development, the County Executive, the County Council, and the community to get that in place. And we think that that, almost all of the CRD for Middle River is currently included in a core retrofit area or node. We'd like to see that little additional piece added on. Again, I provided some maps in the written comments to give you an idea. It represents about 1.3 miles of additional roadway. The Rocket Labs has moved into the Lockheed Martin or is moving into the Lockheed Martin facility. Again, that's an employment driver that may not have been present when the original methodology was looked at. The CP train space, again, Councilman Marks has been working almost since coming into office, probably a little bit before that, on working on that site. And currently, we are looking to have that site put in as a park space. He's looking to secure some open space funding for that. Again, that's going to probably change maybe the way the original methodology was looked at because it's not official, but he's almost got that to the finish line. So that's something we'd like to take a look at.
Conrad, if you could wrap up your comments, you're over three minutes.
Sure. That's no problem. So again, I've got more things listed in the written comments, so you can look at those a little more closely. And, and let's see if there's anything else I have to add. Basically, I guess the goal here is we just want to take, the community and the councilmen have done a lot of work so far and we'd like to be able to dovetail that existing work into the Master Plan. And we feel like the extension and addition of those core retrofit areas for that small section will allow us to do that as a community and kind of prepare us to be proactive for the future. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Conrad?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Conrad. I appreciate your thoughtful input and I've just sent you something. So thank you.
All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Do any of the members have any additional questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Conrad? Hearing done, we will move on to the next speaker. And thank you, Mr. Conrad. Ms. Bel Castro, would you please introduce the next speaker?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Nicholas Stewart. Mr. Stewart, you are on as a panelist. You may unmute yourself or, and or turn on your camera and begin your testimony.
Hi, good afternoon. I'll do both. My name is Nick Stewart. As you know, I'm the co-founder of an advocacy group called We the People Baltimore County, which I founded with Pat Keller, the former Planning Director for Baltimore County for over 20 years. As you know, we testified before you last week with respect to the Master Plan draft, which we're in support of and submitted proposed amendments at that time. Because we weren't anticipating testifying today, you're just hearing from me and my colleague Marshall McLaughlin. We'll share detailed comments and possible amendments once the County Executive Bill that's been discussed is introduced. But we wanted to take a moment today to express support for those recent efforts to allow mixed-use projects by expanding allowable uses in underserved areas. You know, as we shared before, our position is that the Master Plan is a great idea in theory, but it takes purposeful and intentional action to make it real in the lives of our residents. And so this new bill from the County Executive does just that, provides the county with a way of actually realizing a promise and vision that's spelled out in the Master Plan in a few ways. First, allowing mixed use gives real meaning to the many discussions we have during this process and what areas of the county should be designated for revitalization. So that's something that the plan refers to as retrofitting. It also allows substantial investment to flow into those areas that have been long dormant and underserved, which the plan designates as nodes. So Security Square Mall, Liberty Road, Milford Mill, and so on. Second, it reduces the need for planned unit developments or PUDs. We see PUDs as the only real tool to advance mixed-use projects in our county. But PUDs are broken and they don't serve that purpose. They often don't provide real community benefits or the efficiencies and predictability that developers seek. So the other problem, of course, is that they encourage each project to be seen as a one-off project, unconnected to a comprehensive vision for the county. But now we have a way to fix that. And third, allowing mixed use gives us a chance to address the county's major housing crisis with housing costs reaching a decade high in March 2021, supply that's dwindling, existing homes that are nearly 50 years old on average compared to 39 years nationally. So, you know, ultimately, the fact is Euclidean zoning or single-use zoning where each parcel has to be designated for one use. That's obsolete. That people want to live and work and play, you know, all within the same basic area. And if we're going to meet that demand and set our county up for the future, we need a real tool for mixed-use developments. It must be better than a PUD and we believe that it is. And we believe this new effort represents that. So my last point is this, to require that any specific project gets specific sign-off from the local council person is, in our opinion, the opposite of what we know as professional planning. It's a reactive approach that's more geared to preventing than to enabling. And it leads to horse trading and unpredictability. So we have a chance now in advance of these project-by-project battles to talk about the areas for revitalization in the Master Plan, to consider what types of projects right now make sense and then to move them forward so long as they follow established developmental review processes. And in that process, the all-important local knowledge of our local council members is going to be critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Stewart? Okay, hearing done. Thanks again, Nick, and appreciate your time. And so I'd ask Ms. Bel Castro to introduce the next speaker, please.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Rob Allmiller. Mr. Allmiller, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Hello, my name is Rob Allmiller and I'm a Baltimore County resident and a local real estate professional. I previously testified to the Planning Board members when they were considering the proposed Master Plan. I believe the changes implemented by the Planning Board are imperative to the plan's success and I urge the council to support all the Planning Board revisions. Additionally, I want to express my support for further revisions to the Master Plan, which will provide clarity to the plan. These revisions include 10 amendments, which are included in a PDF document that the building community sent to the council members and which I also emailed to each council member yesterday. These amendments include requiring the plan to be in printable format, amending commonly-used terms, revising place type maps and definitions, requiring any future revisions must be approved by the County Council, and clarifying that vision framework goals are aspirational but not mandated. I'd also like to add that the proposed Master Plan acknowledges that the county is quickly becoming fully built out inside the URDL. This has already led to skyrocketing housing costs and more recently, a decline in county population as growth is pushed to surrounding areas. The plan proposes that future growth in the county must come from retrofitting or redevelopment in identified nodes. While the plan identifies nodes theoretically best suited for redevelopment, the plan hasn't studied these areas to determine if they have the infrastructure, land availability, or community support to accommodate redevelopment and increased density. My fear is that due to lack of infrastructure, limited school capacity, and community opposition, these retrofitting nodes will be unable or unwilling to accommodate growth. This would leave the county with virtually no opportunities for future housing or economic growth over the next 10 years and result in further declining of housing affordability, population, and economic opportunity for residents. In closing, I urge the council to adhere to the recommendations of the Planning Board and to implement the proposed 10 amendments, which provide clarity and help avoid ambiguities in the Master Plan, which will govern our county's growth and development for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Mr. Allmiller, do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Allmiller? Hearing none. Thank you again, Mr. Allmiller. And Ms. Bel Castro, could you please introduce the next speaker?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Michael Greenspun. Mr. Greenspun, you are on as a panelist and you may begin your testimony.
Welcome, Mr. Greenspun. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Petoka and other members of the council. I am Michael Greenspun and I've been a developer in Baltimore County for 23 years and I'm currently Chair of the MBIA Baltimore County Chapter. The Master Plan 2030 is an ambitious plan that has elements I support and issues that concern me. It was improved by the Planning Board's changes and those should definitely be included in the final version. Members of my industry will be commenting on a number of other desired changes, so I will focus my comments on just two areas. First, this Master Plan is touted as being a living document with intimations that it can and will be regularly updated, amended, and adjusted throughout the duration of its effective life. While updates, amendments, and adjustments to the plan may be appropriate from time to time, the notion that they can be done on the fly or administratively by the Department of Planning or any other entity other than the Planning Board and County Council should not be implied in the document. Instead, it should be made clear that any changes to the plan must be made through the appropriate legal processes, which require review and approval by the Planning Board and County Council. Similarly, there are references to an implementation page for the plan that will apparently be created after the Master Plan is adopted. Any subsequent amendment to the plan, including the addition of this section, would be required to follow the same process. Secondly, the vision framework establishes the goals for the future long-range development of a sustainable Baltimore County. This is a common aspect of master plans throughout the state, which include a host of aspirational aspects to frame potential paths forward in implementing the plan. Given the vast extent of these goals and actions, it cannot be reasonably expected that all of them will be accomplished during the duration of the plan. They are not mandates. They are not requirements. They are aspirational goals and they cannot be construed to hamstring every single action taken in the county following adoption of the Master Plan. This construction must be made clear in the plan itself. For instance, in Vision Framework Section 3, Goal 2, Action 7 would require new development or redevelopment to provide publicly accessible shared use pathways and increase the acres and quality of open space and forested or tree-shaded open space. While this is an admirable goal, without exact guidance and vastly more specification codified into the law, it cannot possibly be a binding prescription for development. The contents of the vision framework constitute a starting point for new laws, not an ending point for constraining development. Land use decisions concerning individual parcels or projects should not be required to conform to the vision framework and instead should be evaluated on a case-by-case basis through applicable development approval procedures. Otherwise, no subdivision will ever be in compliance with Master Plan 2030 and therefore receive approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Greenspun. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Greenspun? Okay, hearing none. Thank you again, Mr. Greenspun. And I will ask Ms. Bel Castro to introduce the next speaker, please.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Michael Sapniak. Mr. Sapniak?
Well. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. There's a whole lot more panelists this week than there was last week. The landscape of Baltimore County is currently dominated by low-density suburbs. We need to bring balance to this equation with some higher-density areas. If you are asking the question, why? Well, it's because we can't financially afford the suburbia that we have built and attempting to do so is leading us to insolvency. The suburban development pattern, it combines the openness of rural communities with the infrastructure standards of urban communities. The result is communities that are impossibly expensive to maintain, given the tax base. Extending the reach of roads, water, sewer, trash pickup, et cetera, throughout low-density suburbs requires tremendous resources, both upfront and ongoing. Property taxes paid by existing communities fall significantly short of covering the high cost of maintaining everything that many suburban residents, such as myself, have been led to believe are givens. The only reason our suburban pattern of development has been able to continue on for as long as it has without collapsing is because of constant growth, a setup which really just amounts to a Ponzi scheme. As the infrastructure built to service older communities reaches end of life, the strikingly high costs required to maintain and replace it are covered by fees and taxes brought in by new development. However, in the case of Baltimore County, as we know, given its dwindling supply of development-eligible land, that growth is coming to an end. So as such, our only palatable choice is to embrace a gradual densification of our suburban communities. This will allow us to spread the maintenance cost of all of the currently existing infrastructure that we have built across a greater number of households and businesses. So the connected neighborhoods called for by this Master Plan are a step toward that. They identify those areas of the county where densification is to be expected. We can't just keep trying to push growth in the form of new development out to the edges. We need to grow internally and build more densely. Let the county's residents know where that growth and density is going to be allowed and embraced so they can plan for and sort themselves accordingly. We need to move away from our current posture, which has kept the suburban developments that we built after World War II largely frozen in amber since the day they came into being. Healthy communities, they evolve and change. This Master Plan provides a path forward to making that shift. Baltimore County, it's been stagnating. We need this plan. Please, as I said last week, codify it as a controlling document and realign the CZMP so that it falls in line with this Master Plan and future Master Plans. We need this countywide plan to be given to you so that we can move beyond the limited district-specific focus that really is capping our potential. Thank you very much for the time. I definitely appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sapniak. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Sapniak? Okay, hearing none. Thank you again, Mr. Sapniak. And I would ask Ms. Bel Castro to please introduce the next speaker.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Alex Andelsman. Mr. Andelsman, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony. Mr. Andelsman, you are on as a panelist. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, council members, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Alex Andelsman, and I'm here on behalf of the Maryland Building Industry Association, an organization with over one hundred thousand individuals and businesses across our state. I want to begin by asking you all to please consider all of our revisions to Master Plan 2030 that we sent in our written testimony. Our members have provided their own personal anecdotes today, so I was hoping to touch on a couple of the general points. We believe this plan should be easy to access and easy for everyone to understand. The way Master Plan 2030 was first shown online was confusing for many people. Many users and planning board members found the ArcGIS story map or the Master Plan 2030 hub hard to figure out. Also, this format requires users to scroll through many links and extra pages, causing confusion about what's actually part of Master Plan 2030. We suggest having an official printed version for better clarity, so we all can understand this crucial plan that will affect our members in the county for the next ten years. Having a single, traditional document in PDF form to consult will make it easier, more pleasant, and understandable for anyone viewing the plan. Considering that this plan primarily focuses on land development, which is an area already regulated by other laws, introducing an entirely new set of definitions for commonly-used terms in this document seems illogical. The list should be eliminated, or at the very least, any words already defined elsewhere should be removed. Several of the definitions provided in the glossary are inconsistent with existing definitions contained in the Baltimore County Code, Baltimore County Zoning Regulations, Comprehensive Manual Development Policies, et cetera. Having more than one definition for a single term has caused confusion amongst our membership. The glossary also includes new definitions for previously undefined terms, such as accessory dwelling unit and affordable housing. We believe that defining these terms in this manner does not allow for adequate public input or evaluation. The final point that I wanted to address is that primary emphasis of Master Plan 2030 is the implementation of the Place Types Map. This involves providing descriptions for each place type and subsequently dividing the county based on these types. However, the descriptions for certain place types, particularly established neighborhood and connection neighborhood, are not broad enough. It is recommended that revisions be made to encompass both existing and future uses, zoning, and development. Those exact revisions were outlined and have been forwarded to you in our written testimony. That's all I have for today, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Andelsman. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Andelsman? Okay, well, thanks again, Ms. Val Castro. Could I ask you to introduce the next speaker, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Sue Pats. Ms. Pats, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Welcome, Ms. Pats.
Ms. Pats, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you, Chairman Patoka and other council members that work so hard to just make everything work for residents in our community and for giving us the opportunity to comment on the CZMP plan. Uh, as you know, my name is Susan Pats, and my family has lived in Pikeville for over a hundred years. And we've also lived adjacent to the Suburban Club for a hundred years. So we're very familiar with the property that is being asked to rezone. In the 2020 CZM process, we proposed to downzone the entire one hundred and forty-four-acre Suburban Club to establish a Baltimore County Regional Park that would become a regional destination on one of the last large green spaces within the Urteil. We are again asking the county to continue to think about the huge impact a regional park would be for Baltimore County and beyond. This park would complement the Pikeville Revitalization Plan and exponentially add to the anchoring impact of the Pikeville Armory Project, a phenomenal cultural and recreational resource currently underway and also adjacent to the Suburban Club. Imagine the additional draw a regional park would create for Pikeville business, the increase in our property values, and the environmentally important function of green space. Pikeville truly could claim live, work, play. Though a hundred and forty-four acres of Suburban Club is not for sale at the moment, most country clubs are no longer sustainable businesses. Suburban Club is not an exception, having sold land before to offset debt in 2020. Now it's asking to partition off nineteen point nine acres, triple the previous acreage sold. This piecemeal sell-off of property squanders this amazing green tract that the county could best utilize to benefit all county residents in the future and to further catapult the revitalization of Pikeville. Though developers are stating there is a need for housing and also affordability in this area, this is an unusually large tract of land, and the council could be known for its ability to be creating a Baltimore County legacy by preserving this tract intact. Thus, any reasonable zoning changes in the CZMP for this property should lead the county to either mirror the current DR2 category or downzone this property, allowing time for the county for thoughtful planning of this priceless gem for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And Sue, let me just let you know that this... I appreciate your comments. This is not the CZMP hearing. The CZMP hearing for the planning board's CZMP hearing is scheduled for February eighth at Pikeville High School. It's in person at six PM. And then, following that, there'll be another opportunity to present your testimony at the county council's CZMP hearing, which will be... I think we're in the process of scheduling that right now, but I think we're looking for that one to be at Sudbrook Middle School. And so, but I appreciate you giving my colleagues a preview of what they're going to hear at the upcoming CZMP meetings. And also, Sue, I appreciate your insights that you provided tonight, just in your thoughts. You've lived in the area for a long time, and so I appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. So I hope it's helpful to you moving forward.
Yes, thank you very much. I didn't realize that this also was not a time as well as February eighth. So thank you again, council members.
Sure, and you get two more shots at this, Sue, and so I appreciate it. While you're here, Sue, I'll just ask my colleagues if anybody has any questions or comments or thoughts they'd like to share with Ms. Pats. Okay, hearing none. Thanks again, Sue. Uh, Ms. Val Castro, would you please introduce the next speaker?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Eric Rockle. Mr. Rockle, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I'm here to further expand on some of my comments about the core retrofit areas that I made last week in testimony. Again, I feel that these core retrofit areas are too broad-brushed. The county certainly needs some redevelopment, and there certainly will be redevelopment within the county. But I'd like to see the core retrofit areas more strategic in nature, not very broad-brushed. A case in point is something that's happening in the core retrofit area for Towson. Uh, in that core retrofit area, included in it is the historic Black community of East Towson. And I'm saying to myself, why would they want to alarm the residents of East Towson by including it in a core retrofit area and saying it needs to be redeveloped? And my love and knowledge of Baltimore County history took me back to the nineteen sixties when the county did a study for redevelopment of Towson. It showed that Towson Town Boulevard would go straight through the East Towson community and essentially disrupt the community. That brought a tremendous amount of distrust from the community, distrust that I'd say lasted for thirty or forty years. I'd hate to see this master plan be a seat of distrust in East Towson or other communities because, again, the redevelopment scope is so broad-brushed and not more strategic. So I urge the council to look at this issue of how large and the strategic core retrofit areas are. Think about maybe excluding some areas, and I thank the council for its time this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Rockle. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share? Yes, Councilman Ortel.
Uh, yes, Mr. Rockle. Um, where did you see the East Towson piece in the master plan? Do you know where that is?
Well, it's... If you go to the Towson area, core retrofit area, and you open up the map large enough, you can see that places like Lenox Avenue, you know, Virginia Avenue and parts and all that is included within the core retrofit area, Mr. Ortel.
Okay. Well, we may exclude those areas because you're right, that we're not gonna... We're not going to continue to crap on this neighborhood that's been neglected so long in Baltimore County. And I'm just amazed that that's one of the areas that's in here that, you know, you're right. It creates a problem.
Thank you, Councilman Ortel. Thank you, Mr. Rockle. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Rockle from the members or comments or thoughts? Okay, hearing none. Thanks again, Mr. Rockle. And Ms. Val Castro, could you please introduce the next speaker?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next registered speaker is Beth Miller. Ms. Miller, you are on as a panelist. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Patoka and members of the council for this opportunity to testify about Master Plan 2030. I am Beth Miller, and I'm speaking today representing the Green Towson Alliance. Uh, we wish to offer support to the prior testimony of We the People, including today's testimony by Marshall McLaughlin and Nick Stewart, in asking that you restore the language to Master Plan 2030 that was removed by the planning board. In particular, as aligns with our mission as environmental advocates, we ask that you reinsert the Department of Planning text that calls for consideration of effectiveness of stormwater facilities in light of climate changes and edit the wording so as not to prioritize stream restoration over mitigation measures. The master plan's focus on redevelopment of existing nodes within the Urteil is a tremendous opportunity to provide onsite stormwater management that can help mitigate large areas of impervious surfaces that does more than just send it to pipes that lead to our streams. Increasing frequency and intensity of storms due to climate change is exacerbating problems with local and downstream flooding that is disruptive, dangerous, and polluting. Stream restorations can only be effective if upstream conditions are mitigated. Otherwise, powerful storms can make quick work of stream bed stabilization and realignments. It is our hope that the implementation of Master Plan 2030 will include requirements for redeveloped gray sites to provide green infrastructure for stormwater management. In addition to managing stormwater, green infrastructure creates habitat, looks beautiful, and provides physical and mental health benefits. Bio-retention features like rain gardens and specially-designed tree pits and continuous tree trenches allow stormwater to be collected and slowly absorbed into the ground. Plantings and bio-retention features filter pollutants out of the stormwater so they never reach our streams. Pervious paving and parking aisles and pedestrian pathways also contain stormwater onsite, replenishing the water table. Green roofs and cisterns harvest stormwater for onsite irrigation or use in mechanical building systems. These are all ways to manage stormwater that mimic the natural systems that development disrupts more effectively than traditional gray stormwater management methods. What I've described is consistent with the theme of sustainability and a guiding principle of harmony with nature found in the proposed Master Plan 2030. This is a vision of a county with cutting-edge stormwater management that I hope this council will embrace. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Ms. Miller? Okay, hearing none. Thanks again, Ms. Miller, and I would ask Ms. Val Castro if she could please introduce the next speaker.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is James Pizuro. Mr. Pizuro, you are on as a panelist. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Chairman Patoka, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am James Pizuro, Towson resident, treasurer of HOA, member of Strong Towns, Baltimore, and a graduate of the inaugural cohort of the county's Community Planning Institute. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today about the proposed Master Plan 2030. The... This plan's not perfect, but I support it for what I believe is a step in the right direction. Our current built environment and transportation systems are fundamentally flawed, but show tremendous potential. And this plan does a good job identifying areas of particular interest as notes. It is critical that the predominant redevelopment that happens in these nodes is mixed-use and/or transit-oriented because, done thoughtfully, they'd encourage folks to walk, roll, bike, and take transit more often within and between these notes. They would also minimize the per capita stress on the county's budget and existing infrastructure while maximizing the potential for addressing our housing and transportation crises. Council members, please seriously consider any forthcoming efforts to codify what is otherwise only being encouraged by a document like the proposed master plan to give residents and business owners definitive answers that they can plan ahead for as the county moves forward towards a more sustainable and predictable model for growth. I look forward to seeing my neck of woods in Towson grow, and I'll be encouraging more of my neighbors to see it that way as well. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Pizuro, and congratulations on being part of the Community Planning Institute.
Thank you. Great program.
Sure. And you actually are lucky because I know that there was much more demand than there was supply because I know lots of people that were hoping to get in did not, but are going to seek another cohort, admission to another cohort.
It's a good problem to have.
Yes. Uh, do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Pizuro? Okay, hearing none. Thank you so much, and I would ask that Ms. Val Castro introduce the next speaker, please.
Certainly. Our next speaker is Stephen Seibel.
Welcome, Mr. Seibel.
Mr. Seibel, you are on as a panelist. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony when you're ready.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Steve Seibel. I'm a partner with Cave Valley Partners, based in Baltimore County. And I am testifying today to explain our company's perspective as an owner and investor in many Baltimore County properties. As I listen today, I think I'm going to do you all a favor and truncate my remarks so as not to be repetitive. But let me just say that we strongly agree with all of the points that Alex Andelsman raised with the MBIA. One point in particular I'd just like to mention again is the notion that this document is to be a living document, which is somewhat concerning. Anyone who is viewing the master plan has to be able to easily understand it and to rely on its principles once adopted. If there is some notion that this document can change, it will in some sort of administrative way without county oversight, that is of great concern to me and I think many others in our industry as predictability and certainty are critical to facilitating meaningful development. As owners and developers are evaluating properties and seeking investors, the potential for a living document to change it will cause us problems for those efforts because it will not promote certainty. So I would urge you to consider and adopt the edits requested by both MBIA and NAOP, and think about how this plan will impact Baltimore County. and think about how this plan will impact Baltimore County for the next 10 years. As an aside, I'd also just like to mention that I agree with what David Adler, David S. Brown Enterprises, said about Baltimore County becoming a very difficult place to develop. We currently have zero projects in Baltimore County for the first time in my career, at the same time having over a million square feet of development underway in the city. It's just become very difficult for a number of reasons that I don't have time to elaborate on today. But I think that the NAOP and MBIA edits will help make the master plan more conducive to encouraging responsible development, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Seibel. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Seibel? Okay, hearing none. Thank you again, Mr. Seibel. And I would ask Ms. Bel Castro to please introduce the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Tom Valentine. Mr. Valentine, you are on as a panelist. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, Chair Pataca and council members. My name is Tom Valentine. I'm the vice president for policy for NAOP Maryland. NAOP is a commercial real estate trade association representing 22,000 commercial real estate professionals in the U.S. and Canada, including some of the largest property owners in Baltimore County. Our organization doesn't advocate for individual projects or property owners, but we take positions on matters of industry-wide importance. And you have our written testimony, which recommends a limited set of amendments to the plan, which we believe will improve the clarity and facilitate its implementation. First is to produce a PDF version of the plan to serve as the official document. The Story Map online draft is visually appealing, but it contains a large amount of content that's contained in linked documents that can be difficult to navigate. A PDF of the plan that contains all the planned content and serves as the official document, we think will clearly set expectations and make the plan easier to read and follow. Second is make the terms used in the plan consistent with those that are already defined in laws and regulations. We're concerned that the commonly-used terms in the plan aren't consistent and will eventually lead to conflicts and confusion. And we have suggested some approaches to rectify that. Next is to take some steps to define what it means for the plan to be a living document. We're uncertain about how that concept of a living document will play out once the plan goes into effect. And the possibility that the plan can change through an administrative action without council oversight is of concern to our member companies, and you've heard that from several previous witnesses. Fourth is to clarify that the vision framework is aspirational but not mandatory. And the elements of that vision framework are laudable goals, but they're broad, subject to interpretation, and really dependent on site-specific conditions. So we recommend that council clarify that these are goals and aspirational, not mandatory. Fifth is to maintain the planning board changes. There's been a significant amount of work done by the planning staff and the planning board to produce the plan you have before you. And those include some important changes made at that planning board level, and we urge you to maintain those. And sixth is the place types map. You've heard some testimony from individual property owners about the impact on their property and ways that it doesn't really align well with a future where the county needs to accommodate future growth through redevelopment. And we urge that you address that by ensuring that the place type map itself doesn't foreclose beneficial redevelopment opportunities in the future. And with that, I'll just thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for considering NAOP's point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Valentine?
I have one, Chair, please.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Ortel.
Mr. Valentine, could you give us an example of, you said there were some terms used in the master plan that don't seem to be consistent with, you know, I guess, everyday development terms? Could you have any examples in particular that would be helpful for us to hear?
Would you would you permit me to submit something in writing to answer your question?
Yeah, that would be great.
You'd like me to do that?
Yeah, absolutely. It'd just be good to know, you know, maybe have some examples of it.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Councilman Ortel. Any additional questions for Mr. Valentine, comments, or thoughts from? Okay, hearing none. Thanks again, Mr. Valentine. Appreciate your time. And I'd ask Ms. Bel Castro to please introduce the next speaker.
Mr. Chair, our next registered next registered speaker was Russell Cioto or Cioto. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. I cannot find Mr. Cioto on our attendee list if he is still on or please reach out to me in the chat. I will go on to our next speaker, who actually signed up with two names, Norma and James Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins? Mr. Jenkins, you can unmute yourself and begin your testimony. Mr. Chair, Mr. Jenkins is on, but I am unable to unmute him, and I guess he is unable to unmute himself. I'm not sure how he's connected to the meeting.
Mr. Jenkins, if you're able to hear us, if you're able to join us, be able to comment in the text otherwise, please feel free to submit testimony in writing. I see from the notes in the chat right now that Ms. Bel Castro has indicated that we'll be accepting testimony up until February 5th. So that's also an important date for anyone that's still on, and we have quite a few attendees, almost 100 attendees right now. So I would say if anybody has any additional comments that they want to share that they were unable to share tonight, please feel free to send them to the county council. But please get that done by February 5th so that we can begin our deliberations.
And as you can see, Mr. Chair, that was the the two names that I just called were the last two speakers for today's work, public hearing.
Well, thank you, and I would ask if any of my colleagues would want to share any thoughts or comments about the master plan moving forward? And if not, that's okay. Also, we've got busy. We've got an action-packed evening. We will, we have, and all the participants here are welcome to join us at our 6 o'clock regularly scheduled legislative session. That will also be remote due to the inclement weather. And if there is nothing else, I appreciate everyone's time and thought given to this meeting. With that, if there are no other comments or thoughts to share, then I will move to adjourn this hearing. Okay, so we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you all.